Tuesday, January 21st, 2025 at 6:00 PM and I'll call to order the Freetown Board of Suck Meeting. This meeting will be recorded and will be available on the town's YouTube page. Tonight, we will be going to executive session and then coming back into open session. We will be going to executive session for the following reasons. First, Mass General Law, Section 30A, Section 21, sorry, Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares, and I do, this is for Allen Strauss versus Town of Freetown. And second, for Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A6, to consider purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate, if the chair so declares, and I do, that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on negotiating position of the public body. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Motion made.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Low?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. We are now back in open session from executive session. So move on, we're gonna move on to agenda item three, which is discussion on the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners grant. We've got some folks here today to discuss this grant.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Hi, Mary Amy Seifer, Chairperson for the Library Trustees.
Welcome.
Wanted to get on your agenda today.
All right, here you are.
Exciting news. We'll see how long the excitement lasts, but for today, exciting news.
Yes.
So, who want to share?
For you, the good news, that we won our grant. And this is not just years in the making, but decades at this point. Torch has passed from one library trustee to the next. We let some of the former trustees know, tons of excitement, of course with caution, but also just years of work. So we really just wanted to bring it here for you all, share that, and to congratulate Nicole in public. Because until we got Nicole, the trustees didn't know if this would ever be a viable option. She really pushed it through at the end here and really delivered the timetable, everything by the book. So we're super proud of her.
Yeah, we appreciate it. And like, you know, especially over the last couple of years, you've become very aware of how difficult applying for these grants and keeping up to date and it can be. So definitely, it's noted.
Yeah, it was definitely an important partnership between outside vendors, contracted people, Nicole, the Library COA Planning Committee that got together, and then the trustees throughout the whole process. Yes, true. And Deb was there the whole way. So we were very, very fortunate that this team came together at the moment that it did. Would we have loved it to come together two years ago? When we had less issues to like muddy the waters. But we get what we get when the moment arrives. So we did our best.
Now, should we talk about those muddy waters?
I would love to do that too. And we can answer any questions. But really what we wanted to focus on is there's the two parts of this grant. The first one being the planning and development, $100,000. First installment of 90. It's ready to go this week. The problem with that, as we all know, is that we're not in compliance.
We temporarily are.
We're not compliant until in July, we're not in compliance.
Exactly. So we have three different kind of versions of options. One is that we say no, and the next town on the list gets it. That is not what we want. It's kind of our worst case scenario because the odds of us getting it again are pretty slim. We would fall to the bottom of the barrel when right now we're at the top. Another option for us is to submit right now, while we're technically in compliance, we can attest to that and submit our action plan. And then that money sits in an account for us, you know, while this all plays out, that first installment of money. We also have 170,000 of our own that we could work off for this first year and then leave that money untouched while the legal issues are working themselves out. There are more options to this, but those felt like the most viable. I think our biggest fear is that we give it away and then we're forced into compliance later this year. And we lose not only the money fighting that compliance, but then all the millions of dollars we would have had.
And so, Deb, a question for you. Could we take that hundred grand and put it in some kind of high-yield savings account or something of that nature? You know, now that it really matters, but as long as we don't spend it, right?
We have to give it back.
We have to give it back, which is, I think, an important distinction for folks to know. It's not like, and when we say compliance, we're talking about the MBTA development or zoning laws.
Zoning law, exactly.
They're using that as the stick in the current stick analogy. So if it's not just that they'll stop funding something, it's that they claw it back and take the money back, which I think is a...
It's a big distinction, especially here. Because I think if we didn't have that 170 ready for our own planning and development, this would be a much easier decision.
Can you tell me where you're getting that 170 from?
The 150 that we did at town meeting.
So you're already including that.
And then the original planning and, what's left of the original planning and design grant we got in 2001.
Isn't that much because you did have to pay for the planning.
It was like, it was like 30-something, I think, and then we spent eight. So it's a little less.
So we still have enough to work for this six-month period to start something. Or we just hold with both that separate amount of monies. I just worry if we give it back, we're forced into compliance, then we've lost it all. I don't want to give anything, I don't want to spend anything that we have to give back and penalize the town in any way, but I also don't want to just give it up yet.
Yeah. I mean, that does, that seems like a pretty good point to make, as long as we don't spend it.
So we get 100,000, do we have to add our match to it?
So we already, ours is already in its own account. The 150 that we did at the town meeting, I don't know, it was like...
Two years ago?
Two years ago.
I think October of 2020.
It was in June, I think.
But it's already allotted and ready to go.
So let's just talk about this part of it too. So if, because, and I think this, as long as you don't spend it, right? I'm thinking about if we went forward and did spend that money and then they claw it back, then we probably would build a different building than we would, right?
Yeah. The other piece is if we spend the phase one money, we are not obligated to take the second phase. So if we get through planning and design and we're like, this design is not, we don't end up wanting to go. We need a different design because the town doesn't want to match that whatever, 6 million, 7, whatever it ends up being to do the shared structure, we can say no to that second half. The first half and the second half are their own entities. So they have tiered people waiting on wait lists for each part of those in case people say no.
Yeah.
So if we don't get it.
So we're like immediately funded for both. If we move forward to the second part, we would immediately get the construction money once we got through that phase, where the waitlisted libraries have to wait.
Until all of us kind of either fall apart or say no, or the town says no.
Right, yeah. I wonder how many other towns who are in the same boat we're in right now.
There is a couple.
In our tier, I don't know that there's any, but in the medium tier, which is the next one, Hanson is in the same, I don't know if they voted, but the similar situation where they're, they have to...
I don't know how they're gonna fund it. I really don't.
Yeah, but I don't even know if they're in, like their compliance piece, I don't know if they're...
But we were definitely top of the list, ready to go. They're ready to do what they can. And it's, it is a hard decision either way. And that's kind of where we were like so excited and, you know, cautious, cautious with these pieces.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like, well, I guess Deb, is there any risk that I'm not seeing here?
So the risk is the 100,000, right? I think that's really, this phase one, the planning and design, is that, I guess it's twofold. One, it's 100,000. So we move forward, we spend their 100,000 and we become non-compliant, we have to pay back the 100. So that's monetary risk. I think the other risk to this project, and you've talked a little bit about it, Amy, is that the time, right? If we move forward in this direction, that sort of solidifies the direction we're moving in. If we get the plans all designed, which is gonna take a full, at least I'd say a year, year, maybe 14, 15 months, and then we're not in compliance, we don't get the second half, we're back at square one. So I think there's a little bit of momentum, morale, that, you know, here we go again. We're back at square one. And we've been at square one a few times around here. Like we can, you know, five steps forward and 27 backwards. So I think there's that risk, is that we just waste more time moving. But monetary, you're just at risk for the 100.
But I think that, like, if we're on the same page, it's like, that, well, accept the grant, put the 100 grand in account, and then don't touch it. So if we are found actually out of compliance, which more than likely we will be, we just give that 100 grand back.
Okay, so what we would have to do though, in order to pay for this phase, is we would have to fund another 100 grand somewhere. Because we can't just say, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna sign a contract for 250 grand.
Okay. So we still need, yeah, that makes sense. Because it's gonna cost more than the 170 that we have.
Right. It's gonna cost the 250, she's saying 200, the consultant said 200, but I think because we have a joint building, we're gonna be spending more than that. So we will have to fund that so that we have it available. And then sort of, if we get the grant, we don't spend our money kind of thing, or we put the grant money into, you know, into the general fund.
Well, I think we have to acknowledge too that we're always gonna spend our own money because it's a joint building. The library piece will only, and once we get construction, that will also only go for the library component. So no matter what, we would always be spending some of the town's money, accepting that we're getting a huge chunk of it from the state, but not all, understanding.
Yeah.
And I think that there's...
Pro-rata, or a percentage, like give us a percentage allocation.
And there's another piece of waiting to do our action plan and see how the next couple of months go. So maybe we don't go on, you know, immediately in spending the money that we have allotted as a town, but we wait out these components because we can see how fast the state's gonna move on these pieces and what out of compliance will actually mean for the remaining towns that are all dealing with this at the end of the year. Might look something different than it is right now, based on the number of legal battles that the state is up against.
Yeah. And I mean, you know, she said, the governor put out emergency regulations right away. I've panned through them. I haven't studied them, and I need to. They might be a little different than what we have had in the past in terms of density numbers.
Like you're saying, less...
Less density, based on, yeah. It's still high, but, so the couple of months may give me in town council and consultants, an opportunity to vet that information and say, okay, this is what we now need to do. You know, we already have high density in that area. It's just not as high as what this MBTA zoning wanted. So instead of it, you know, being 750 units, if it's 500 units, which is kind of what I was thinking it says, we're already zoned for, I don't know, I don't remember how many eight units per acre, like 400, 450.
It's a lot.
I thought it was 350.
Yeah, so maybe then it's more palatable. I don't, I don't know. I'm not there mentally. I'm not in that mode of that zoning because we know that the town really, really strongly opposed the zoning.
And we're not the only, like, that's why, like, the way this shakes out might be something we're not even expecting right now because there is, I think every town is voting pretty strongly against it and the state might just take away the decision that they gave us.
I think they might. And the other thing too, yeah, I, you don't know. There was a little caveat in the court case that said the state had to do impact studies on all of the towns. And I'm not sure how the governor is gonna get around that because that's very timely and very costly. So there's that little caveat too, that I'm not sure how they're going to handle that because I was thinking, oh, well, if they have to do an impact study on every town that turned this down, that's gonna take like five years. I don't know. We have some breathing room here. But then you came out with the emergency rules and regs. So there's still, we just got all of this in the last week. So there's a little bit to pick apart here and really figure out what direction it's all gonna go in. My thought process was maybe the governor was gonna appeal the decision and get rid of those impact studies, right? I don't know. Like, it hasn't happened yet, but she just did emergency regulations. And you're right, she might just ultimately say, sorry, this is what you're doing, which is what I've said all along. You're not really given as a choice, but you're given as a choice.
Yeah, because we're already losing grants.
Yeah, and the other pieces, I mean, people's appetite for the length of how this goes might change if it's already zoned for something. But outside of the zoning piece for us, we're gonna have to make a decision in the next 30 days not to spend the money, but to whether or not to accept it and hold it, or to just decline it. Because we have to get our action plans in and see how that goes. So it's an unfortunate piece for us because the timing is in fact terrible.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
But I think there is a way to balance both until we know more. And then we can turn, we can decline and change our mind at any point. We are able to notify them and like work through that process.
Okay.
It did seem that it was gonna move pretty quickly though.
Yeah.
Like in other words, I don't know, from when I was on with Nicole, but also I listened the next day to one of their seminars. It seemed to be like, they're gonna send out those contracts, gonna get them back. They, I mean, if we're gonna be done with this in a year, we need to move. You know, it takes some time to do an OPM and hire an architect. Like, it takes some time. It's, the RFP process alone is three months, I'd say. So I'm not sure that we have downtime built in to say, okay, we're gonna sign the contracts and then we're gonna wait and see how this plays out. I don't think that will work. I think you'll end up being really behind the eight ball on the other end. So. I mean, we can certainly have more conversation about it, but...
It's a lot to mull over.
Yeah.
Well, one thing I don't want is us not putting up a fight. I wanna keep pushing forward, right? It's been, it's been a heck of a two years to get us to where we are today. Well, 30-plus years to get us where we are today. Let's face it. It was the one, first thing that people told me when I first started running was library and Council of Aging. And I wanna see both of them built someday. But here we are, at the mercy of the state, in a sense, right? Yeah, I think we give it a shot. You're right. Because what if they do change their minds in six months and then we said no, then all of a sudden there's a way for us to say, to stay yes.
I just, for me, it feels like we're gonna need to build the structure anyway, at some point. So having the planning and design done is a step ahead that we might not get a shot at doing in the next couple of years. But it is, it is a really tough call to make this decision. And it also, you know, we were talking, it's kind of hard because these are the people that the state's attempting to help, are disenfranchised community members that need access to these things. And taking away that money from us is harming those same people that they're wanting to help. So, you know, I've had this conversation with our representative, our Senator Rodriguez, to go through this. And, you know, these are, he's offered to have some phone calls about, you know, troubleshooting, because he's, he was excited for our community to get this because he knew how big the need was and visited our sites and...
Oh yeah, he hears it too. He hears it from all constituents that are here telling us the same thing. He definitely hears it from, I know he hears it from us, so I can only imagine what he hears it for when he comes out to town.
Any other questions that our board can answer for you?
I guess one question is, so you said, decision needs to be made in 30 days.
I think they're gonna send out the contracts soon. I think it's gonna go to you for you to get...
And I think it'll come to you first and then it will go.
It's like, I mean, whoever I put is the person that signs contracts.
It's usually me who signs those.
So then it will go out and you'll get the, you'll get copied on the information.
So I think it's just like whether or not we're gonna sign the contract.
Yeah. I feel like from, at least, I'd like to get this on the next agenda. So more time to digest, think about this, maybe kind of...
And let me pick apart that thing and maybe get some more input on the MBTA zoning and what, how that's all working. Because that just got thrown down on us too.
Pretty fresh. Is that, are you guys comfortable with that? We're not saying no yet.
No, we're so comfortable. As long as it's on your thoughts. And really, tonight was just to like celebrate.
The timing couldn't be any worse, huh?
Yeah.
And honestly, I didn't put a vote on the agenda, so really...
I couldn't vote anyways.
Yeah, no, it's perfectly fine.
Because I think that you probably could have voted tonight, but I don't have it on there.
No, just mull it over and we'll keep an eye on the next agendas. And if there's more questions, just let us know. And in the meantime, you know, we're grateful for so many people's help in getting to here, to even have these options, to be able to talk about it.
Yeah. Well, I do wanna say that I do a lot of grant writing, as you all know. This was one of the most complicated, complex grant applications that I have seen that I have encountered. And I have done federal grants, which are much more complicated than state grants. But it was a lot of work. And Nicole did a great job at methodically pulling it apart and getting the partner that she needed to fill each part in and doing what, and completing the pieces that didn't get put in by somebody else. She did spend a lot of time. And we, I know we had some weekly, monthly meetings trying to make sure that I did my piece. And she did that with everybody, making sure that they did their piece. So this is a great accomplishment, whether we end up building this library or not. I am proud. I think that you should be extremely proud of yourself and the trustees as a whole. This was no small feat. There's a lot of competition in that grant. I worked for Hanson. They wanted it then, when I worked there, back, you know, five years ago. Extremely competitive. And so you should be extremely proud of yourself. And I think one way or another, you're gonna get a new library, just may not be, it may not be grant-funded.
We're gonna have running water?
Bathrooms?
Come on, I wasn't planning on doing that.
Just take any water.
Any, yeah, all the above.
And so you folks know, this is a great achievement from this library committee, our trust and everything else, right? And Nicole as well. It's, keep your heads up high, regardless of where this takes us in six months. This is a milestone of milestones. We're gonna keep pushing forward, all right? I know we have limited options, but we'll, we will figure those options out and get the best one for our town today and tomorrow, right? Hopefully, it all works out, you know? We'll knock on wood, find one, knock on it. But great job to all of you, right? Everyone that was involved. Don't give up. I know it's easy to give up, especially with so much, so many things ahead of us or potentially in front of us. Keep pushing. Don't give up. We're all proud of you. I know from this side of the table, we're definitely proud. And I'm sure people at home listening, watching, they're screaming, let's go. We need another library.
One piece at a time.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna move on now to agenda item four. Discussion and vote whether approved the rules and regulations may all for civilian employees and volunteers for the police department, as presented by Police Chief Rose. Chief?
Yes, where to begin? So rules and regulations are the backbone of the police department. It identifies the employee, basically the code of conduct. Years ago, rules and regs were set in place specifically for the police sworn officers. On the other side, we have our civilian dispatchers. And for years, we were able to govern most of those employees with those two sets of rules and regulations. Now that our department is evolving and there are changes within the department, we have civilian employees that no longer are covered under the dispatcher's rules and regulations. They're more a part of the police entity. And those positions are the secretary, potentially lockup attendants, who are not members of the dispatch, traffic controllers, which are fairly new within the past couple of years, and the volunteers that we take in as student interns. So these rules and regulations that I presented to the board are basically mirror image to the rules and regs to the other entities that I just mentioned. One of the questions you might have is, you know, why have another set of rules and regulations on the police side for civilians? Well, the honest answer is this, that the rules and regs that are written for the police and are directed to sworn officers only has nothing to do with civilians. So it was easier to create another set of rules and regulations specifically for civilians and those volunteers. They mirror image to dispatch, identifies all the code of conducts, generalized in that close to 60-page document. But it's something that is needed going forward, that I'm already predicting a problem with accreditation if we don't have this in place for those employees and those volunteers. So I'm getting ahead of it now. I'm hoping you guys had a chance that you take a look at it. But if you had some questions about that, be happy to...
My favorite one was, there's no sleeping while on duty. That was my favorite.
It's important. It's important.
Just so you know, when I received this, I sent this to Labor Council, right? Because my concern is overlap with union, right? So he has not had a chance to completely review it. So I just want his comments back and then we'll, if whatever, if Attorney Joe Fair has any concerns, I'll relay them with you and we'll figure that out. But I just, I think, you know, when you're talking about with the town, within the town, there's multiple layers of employees. And I need to, you know, we've got five unions. We have bylaw employees. We have elected officials. We have contract employees. I need to see how this fits into that. Because even if there are civilian employee working within the police department, they may fall under one of my unions or they may be a bylaw employee. So I need to make sure that it doesn't overlap in a bad way, right? So I did send it to Joe Fair, who has all of our unions and whatnot, just to take a peek at it, to see if we had any complicated issues, that it was gonna create any issues. And he hasn't had a chance to look at it, so.
Should we vote just to avoid, if there... I think, good case. Good chance it comes back with no issues. Should we vote pending Council's approval?
Sure.
Does that make sense?
I'm not in a crunch time. I have time here. I'm already looking at my accreditation assessment to be in November. So I got plenty of time here, but it's definitely worthwhile having town council look at. I can walk through those positions real quickly to say that our current secretary's not a part of a CBA. She's under the personnel bylaw. The lockup attendants under the personnel bylaw. Traffic controllers are at will employees, they're not, and then the volunteers. So the CBA is not gonna be volunteering.
But we do have personnel bylaw. So like you said, there's pieces of this. And I just, we're in the process of creating a handbook for the employees. So that's another piece of this. So a lot going on there. And I just, I just wanna make sure we're all on the same page when we, and I'm fine with you approving it, subject to, because if there's anything that town council comes back with, I think that Chief and I and town council could figure it out.
Sure.
Yeah, I don't think it's bad. All right.
One question. Chief, like many things, when it comes to like well-established police procedures and everything else, was this taken from another police station or police department and you kind of retrofitted to fit our own? Or did you just kind of write it up on yourself?
Honestly, this goes back to the former chief. And the first set of rules and regulations, I think, were drafted like around 2005, 2006. And then they were amended in 2013. Then going forward, looking at the situation that we're dealing with now, I only took the current rules and regs from both those entities and created this one here for the civilian employees and the volunteers.
It reads well. It sounds like you put a lot of work into this. Well, it reads as though you put a lot of work into this, so.
Yeah, I spent a lot of time, obviously. This is my niche. This is what I've been doing for years with accreditation. I'm not really sure if you got the digital version, but it's all hyperlink. So if you want a specific location you wanna jump to, you hit it, brings you to that spot. Like I said, I think it's a 60-page document. So, yeah, it's pretty involved, pretty... Again, to address all the code of conduct issues that we expect to our employees.
Yep. Ambiguity is never good in these things. I'd rather have it be the answer. All right.
Yeah.
Good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, so with that, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the rules and regulations may all for civilian employees and volunteers for the police department, pending review from council.
I made that motion.
Second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so you're not off the hook yet, Chief, I don't think?
Okay.
Thank you very much for that, though. So next is, this is agenda item five. Discussion and vote whether to declare the 2013 Chevy Caprice from Freetown Police Department Fleet as surplus and what to do with this vehicle. Am I saying that right, Caprice?
Caprice, correct. It's classic.
Read up the memo. So, yeah, like, I think the big, important thing here is just that this has been, the car's been diske, you know, they don't make this model anymore. We're having trouble getting parts for it. It's totally not at all in line with the rest of the fleet. Therefore, it's just more of a pain to work on it. Makes sense to me that we hold this one off.
This is the oldest car in the fleet. And we've weighed out the issues about, is it worthwhile dumping more money into it? Being, is it gonna be cost-effective? The vehicle's only a two-wheel drive.
Another big problem.
You know, it's, so it adds up. And even at that, this age of this vehicle, you don't know what else is lurking around the corner. Brake lines will start to rot, you know, all these other little things will appear. So...
I have a 2015 car. My Chuck Angelike came on this week and I have to go back to Audi. Not looking forward to it.
Oh, no, not Audi.
It's not gonna be cheap. Yeah, I get it. So I guess, you know, this might be put in the cart for the horse a little bit, but if we say, let's do some uni bid, should we discuss kind of a minimum bid on it?
Yeah.
I mean, do we have any idea what this will...
I did not estimate the current value of the car.
Looks nice.
Be honest with you, it would have to go up on a lift and take a look at what it looks like underneath. You might be dealing with rot you don't even see. I can say that the body's in good shape. We have some minor dents and scratches. I can say that the body's in good shape. We have some minor dents and scratches, but, uh, other than that, it's, it looks good from the outside. It's the, the unknowns that, that we're dealing with and, and the, uh, you know, the engine light and the ABS stuff that's going on.
So this is like a under, like the white one, right? But the pictures are in our, so it's not like a regular cruiser?
Correct. Um, the former chief, uh, had an opportunity to purchase two of these, um, years ago, and we, he got a real good price on it. And, uh, they were mainly for admin cars.
Okay.
Um, but it's, yeah, it's, it's, we got our money's worth out, and it's starting to show issues.
And I, and I talked to you about taking it for an admin car for the town hall, but I think it's got too many issues. I don't want it. You know, it's gonna cause us more grief.
Yeah.
I think you just put it on muni bid and maybe two thousand dollars, or we can look at Kelly Blue Book and go from there.
Yeah, so I, I could put that into the, uh, just whatever the, you know, if we put the quality, like, you know how Kelly Blue, you put like the condition, put it fair to poor or something?
Yeah.
And we could just put it listed at whatever that is.
Cause the engine light's on, which doesn't mean it's in poor condition.
Engine light, and ABS light.
You don't know if it's sensors, it could be something more major. It's, it's the unknown. I mean, we could hold on to it longer and maybe it'll be an antique and worth-
You're not too far from it.
Right, another seven years, right?
Twenty years, right?
Yeah.
Again, man. It's so deceiving when you look at it, like, that's a, that's a twenty thirteen. Looks like a modern car still.
Yeah, yeah.
My car's in two thousand fifteen.
Yeah.
It's crazy how it's ten years old now.
We keep up with our vehicles pretty well, um, but like I said, age is the, the factor here and the current issues with the vehicle.
Um, okay. Any questions or concerns?
Let's put her off the pasture.
Alright. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to declare the two thousand thirteen Chevy Caprice from the Freetown Police Department as surplus and to list it on muni bid, um, with the minimum bid price being the low range of the Kelly Blue Book value.
Motion made.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That make sense?
Yes.
Enough bookroom there?
Yes.
Okay. Think you're done with us, Chief?
Thank you very much.
More than welcome to hang out, but you know?
No, that's quite all right. Mrs. Rose misses me.
Alright, have a good evening.
It is.
Okay, moving on to gen item six. This is discussion of vote whether to approve, um, but not release the executive session minutes from one, six, twenty twenty-five. I'll entertain a motion to approve not release those, those executive session minutes.
Motion made.
I'll second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, gen item seven, I'll entertain a motion to approve the open session minutes from twelve to twenty twenty-four. What's that motion?
Motion made.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and now gen item eight is a presentation from Gremm, um, Pedersen, Inc., GPI from potential phase two of the South Main Street sidewalk project. We have Jim here.
This is the project that, that we asked for to add sidewalks, and sometimes it's better if they just present it so you can see it.
Just a heads up, we do have a scheduled open hearing in twelve minutes. So do you think it's gonna take longer than that?
No.
Okay. Alright, great.
You can make it as quick as you want. Yeah, we were asked to look at a second sidewalk on the east side of, uh, South Main Street between High Street and Onaham Way. We've done that, and, um, the sidewalks are easy to design and construct, or they have a couple of issues to it. So bottom line is, um, the, the most critical area is, um, in front of the former cemetery where the slope goes up. Um, we did look at it trying to, um, build the sidewalk and then dress grade up to the cemetery wall. That wouldn't work on a two-to-one, um, slope. Anything steeper, two-to-one, we were gonna have to do riprap the entire slope, and I don't think that would be, seeing this as a, you know, it, within a national, uh, the register of historic places, I don't think that would be, uh, appropriate way to go. So we've, we've done a similar wall in West Bridgewater, and that was built, the picture on the top of that, that was built this year, um, earlier in the spring. Um, LAL, Out of Fall River did the work on it, and, um, you know, they, they came up with old stones. We wouldn't want anything new. We want something that blends into that slope. The wall itself is about the same size, it's only about two feet high, um, so it's not gonna be intrusive, but I think, you know, that type of wall will fit in. You know, I couldn't think of anything else. There's a different type of wall that, um, is also historic, and we were gonna use this at one spot where you just use, it's old railroad blocks, they're about two by two by eight. But a lot of times you can't get consistency in them, and, you know, sometimes you'll get one that's six-foot wall, it's six-foot long and it's not square and things like that, so we looked at that. Um, the only other issue out there is the utility poles. Um, there's one that would have to be either braced or, um, they'd have to drive some sheeting in front of it. And the second wall, uh, second utility pole is over on the corner of the cemetery as you're going north. It's between the cemetery and I believe that's, uh, the Brown property next door to it. Um, that one would need to be moved. That, you know, we looked at ending the wall just short of that utility pole, so we didn't have to move the pole, but still, we have the same slope issue. If you go out there, you'll still, still see the same slope. Possibly we could do some riprap, but, you know, I think, um, the easiest, well, it's not the easiest, cause it's never easy when you're moving utility poles, but the best solution seemed to be moving that utility pole. So other than that, going further south, I mean, it's just everything will fit in. We didn't see any other issues going all the way down on Onaham Way. So it's just, it's just in that area. Um, we don't propose any new crossings. We would, uh, we would narrow down High Street a little bit because that's a very wide-open layer, and we'd narrow that down about fifteen feet for the crossing, so it's less of time to cross in there. And then, yeah, you have the crosswalk just north of High Street, and there's one right by Simpson Lane.
Right. Yeah, I think it's Onaham as well, that they started.
Right, yep.
Yeah. Yeah.
We also came up with an estimate of the cost and, um, with everything, um, uh, you know, construction costs and then the remainder of the design and procurement and construction admin, and it came out to be a little bit less than three hundred thousand on that.
How much?
Little less than three, two ninety-five. That's not including, I mean, utility poles are supposed to be, you know, they're supposed to move them on their, their own, so.
Yeah. That's designed. I'm, I'm just wondering if there's a grant, I can get like a shared, I wonder if like a shared street grant, that would help. I know they capped at about two fifty. I don't, I mean, I don't think it's one of the things in my complete streets, um, thing, so I think, I don't think I could get a complete street grant, and of course all MBTA's own-
Are they gonna call that back too?
Yeah.
They, they're, they're clawing back everything so far that I've seen, so they, they originally set a few like big ones, but now I'm seeing even the little ones. Like I told you, the little safety grant to the fire department, they're taking, so I, I don't know.
Cycling grant they took.
Yeah.
Seventy-five hundred bucks.
Yeah, so I'm not sure. I was just wondering if there was grants, um.
Yeah, there's a shared space, shared streets and spaces grant, which just closed last-
It did just close, yeah.
A week ago, yeah.
But it, does it open again in, in the spring? It might-
I know there's that whole, um, what's it, one stop for-
One stop for growth, but I don't know that there's anything that, those are the big ones, mass work, so it's, I don't think it would, and it would fit. I can look. I mean, I definitely can look. One of the thoughts that does come to my mind, though, is I do think we got this of the sidewalk, which is expensive. That crosswalk on High Street, I think that, it, that, closing that in would be really beneficial, cause that is real tough there. And it's wide open, and people come across the street from the church and they, they sometimes pack down there, you know what I mean? And that is crazy how wide open it is there.
And I, I, we did look at, um, we think of moving that crosswalk to pretty much right across from the rectory there. Problem with that, too, is you need a wheelchair ramp there, and they have that three-foot stone wall. So once I put the wheelchair ramp in, it exposes like two or three inches of the bottom of that wall. I don't know, you know, it's, I don't know if that wall's like right flush with the sidewalk as it is now, or if it does have some sort of footing, so sometimes one thing leads into another and it just, you know, we just recommend it just leaving the crosswalks where they were.
Well, this is where this came from, watching people trying to navigate one sidewalk to the other, then navigating, like, whether it was a mother with, with a stroller or somebody with a walker or wheelchair, trying to go around the poles. And I kept wa, watching these individuals go onto the street, back onto the, around the pole, around the mailbox. When there's a perfectly good sidewalk on the other side, that goes all the way to Far River. So to me, it was a, it was a no-brainer. So I'm w, wondering if there's a ADA grant out there for this, cause it would benefit a lot of people, ADA, our senior population, um, well, anybody, any population, I'm just seeing, just to call them out.
Yeah, ADA just closed too, but I mean, I could apply for all of them, you know, you just, you hit a, once you write it, it's written. And you just tweak it for the purpose that you're writing it for. Um, but I think that this, this is probably enough for me to start a grant application, um, unless it's something you wanna fund at town meeting. I don't have funding right now, obviously, but I wanted, the work has been done for a bit. I wanted them to, uh, Jim to present it to the board so that they, they ask for it, so you know, and you can make that decision when we get closer to- Well, we're in budget season now, so it's something that if we have funding, you may wanna do, may not wanna do. You may wanna do parts of it and not other parts of it.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, there should be MBTA money for this, really, because like, the Main Street's gonna be so much bigger.
Yeah, well, and that helps the grant applications, right? Like I said, we do have a new MBTA station, it's, you know, in order for it to be-
Able to walk, you know, the police, like, walk to public transportation, like.
Cause where the other side of the sidewalk is, where the, where the sidewalk ends, now you have to cross back over to High Street.
That sidewalk is tough though, cause the poles are right in the middle of it. It is really hard to actually walk on the sidewalk.
But you, so you, like, it's funny, cause our, our, the, a public hearing we have is regarding moving a pole, not this pole, though.
Not this pole.
So, like, is it, uh, they should pay for that, right?
I won with this.
And like, generally, they do pay to, if, if we request it?
Uh, yeah, they, they, they usually pay for it. It's just difficult to get them to do it.
The, um, the pole that's right in front of the rectory, that's the worst one of the whole stretch right there, too. The one reason I re, recall when we were out there with Chuck McCumber, um, there are three risers that come out, and I think they go out to the church or whatever. Anything dealing with the risers or those lines would actually have to be paid for by the town, the, you know, the, the utility company's supposed to pay for moving the pole back, but then the town would be responsible for having to do all the electrical work, um, to reconnect those wires up to the riser. So that was the reason why, you know, unfortunately, yeah, it's stuck right in the middle of the sidewalk, right in front of the church. It's not a great spot.
Not a great spot at all.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, they've been, I mean, Eversource has been working on putting a lot underground up, up, um, South Main Street further. I don't know what their plans are, maybe I can ask them, but the problem with anything in this town is you're dealing with Verizon, Comcast, and Eversource. All three of them have to touch the project, and that's where we get tangled up. And it's not this one's, it's that one, and it's not that one, it's that one, and you can just go around in circles with those three entities.
Alright.
Yeah.
This is very good. I think, uh, we have some decisions to make and, uh, try to get some grant money. There's nothing we can vote on tonight, right?
No, it was just a presentation, so you knew what-
Well, I really appreciate coming down and-
Definitely.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much.
This looks awesome. Now we just gotta figure out how to pay for it.
The hard part.
As it always is. Thank you.
Quickly, too.
Thanks for solving that issue with, about the stone wall. That was my concern, you know?
Yeah, and I, I was, you know, having dealt with historical, you know, knowing what they'd like and sort of prefer.
Yeah, keep the aesthetic and, yeah.
Yeah.
I get it. Alright, I'll do abatements real quick. Gen item nine. This is discussion of vote whether to approve ambulance abatements and write-offs for December twenty twenty-four in the sum of two hundred and sixty-six thousand, five hundred and forty-three dollars and eighty cents. I will entertain a motion to approve those ambulance abatements.
Motion made.
Uh, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Well, let's, uh-
You have two minutes.
One, you might wanna hold, not that it's that long. Eleven you could do.
Yes. Alright, gen eleven, we're gonna come back and hold on ten. Discussion of vote whether to accept the one hundred dollar donation to the council on aging from the Pitch Club, and I saw on the note that the Pitch Club has been using the facilities there, and so they, out of their gratitude, they donated a hundred dollars.
Fantastic.
So we appreciate that. Um, uh-
Maybe two, yeah, fourteen.
Is, uh, any questions or concerns? Any comments? No? So with that, I'll entertain a motion to accept the one hundred dollar donation to the council on aging from the Pitch Club.
Motion made.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Maybe thirteen, so.
Thirteen. So this is, uh, discussion of vote on increasing outreach worker hours and funding increases, uh, using the Formula Grant fund spending, council on aging, um, pending council on aging approval. I read that in the packet as well. I think that you have, uh, really good case to increase these hours.
Hot doggy.
Yeah, it seems like the work that's been done has been, you know, super impactful, um, and we appreciate that. I honestly wasn't aware that there was only that many hours right now, um, so I totally-
They're paid for by a grant.
Yeah, and the grant runs out in June, right?
This is something we all discussed when we first started this, right? It was like, we're gonna open this up, and we gotta realize it's probably too, too little of hours, right? So here we are.
Very quickly, she's become indispensable.
Yeah.
And that's the word for it. I just, I can't keep up now.
Yeah.
So, um, I need her.
This is a good problem, though. Yeah, I see this is a good problem.
It is a, well, it's a good and a bad problem, I guess.
Depending on the way you look at it.
We've had some rough cases lately, but, um-
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, I need her, so.
Yeah.
Well, our aging population is just growing, right? It's becoming such a big part of our town population, so we, we, I think it's not unforeseeable that this is what's gonna happen. We're gonna need more staff to help, um, take care of them appropriately, the way the town should take care of them, I think.
I think this is one of the first conversations we had. You asked me what you thought I, I would need, and right away, within the first month, I think I said I, an outreach worker. So this is where we're at, and twenty months later, this is definitely where we're at.
Has it been twenty months already?
Twenty months.
Isn't it crazy?
Yeah.
Time flies, man.
I know.
The stuff done. I like it. I like it.
And so we're talking about going from, so currently it's eight hours, if I remember that correctly, and like to go to-
Up to twenty.
Up to twenty and, and with some flexibility, you know what I mean, so that she might work sixteen one week, she might work eight the next week, because of course she's still doing our community program stuff.
Right.
Which is awesome, so we don't wanna lose that either.
Yeah.
So that'll be a, a discussion, yeah, how we, how we work that with the budget season coming up. But for right now, they have the money in the Formula One grant. Um, I think the town needs this. I, I've thought that for a while. We're just sort of working it in here.
Yeah, yeah. This makes a lot of sense to me.
I've talked to many of my board members, one-on-one, and, um, almost all of them, six of them are in full agreement of it. We didn't take a formal vote, but verbally and through email and whatnot, individually, they're all in agreement.
Perfect, yeah.
As I, uh, I'm speechless, it's, uh, you, you know, a lot of good points made. We, we do have growing population that's gonna need more and more of our hope, and this tells them that, hey, we're here to help you, right? A lot of towns don't, maybe not, may not have this opportunity, but I'm glad to say that we do, and let's, let's keep going. Alright, keep doing, you, keep doing what you're doing. Uh, we hear a lot of great things from, from both of you and from the population you serve, to the people you work with. We're very proud of you, and it's a good warm feeling inside knowing that, you know, it's still good in this world.
Alright, so with that, so I'll entertain a motion to increase outreach worker hours, um, from eight to twenty hours, um, and funding increase using the Formula Grant pending the council on aging board approval.
Motion made.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Okay, so now, we're gonna-
She has one more item, number fifteen, the van.
Oh, yeah, she did that real quick. I'm, I'm fine. I started the hearing a couple minutes later, right? As long as it's not too early.
Yep.
I made that mistake before? Okay, gen item fifteen. So this is the, um, this is whether or not to approve and sign the sales order from National Van Builders for the Council on Aging van. I saw the plans. It was like, was it ninety thousand?
Kind of round two. I said this is count, kind of round two.
Okay.
We didn't get the first van that we were going for. Um, so this one is, I'm told is not going to get taken from us, so.
Is it just we moved too slow last time?
What happened was, it was the chassis. We were waiting for, I guess they didn't get the, it was a Ford Transit van, and they didn't get the chassis for it. Long story short, but, um, these are on, we have the VIN number for this one, so we know this is not gonna get taken from us, so.
And we're using, um, grant monies and earmark monies, and they have to be spent by a certain date, so-
Yeah.
We couldn't, we couldn't delay any more with, waiting for the Ford Transit van, which we're still waiting for one of our town vehicles that has been ordered, uh, like eighteen months ago. So, um, it's a real problem. Um, so Rebecca went and pounded the pavement and found another van that will work for her needs and will be able to utilize the grant funding, which I think is fifty thousand in total between two brands, right?
And I, I followed up with both the, um, Senator Roderick's office, and they're fine with, you, you know, the June thirtieth deadline now. We had to prolong that. And then, um, I followed up with MCOA, and they were able to, um, uh, agree to the change of vehicle, so we're all set with that. So fifty grand is, is- So fifty grand is, is fine.
And the rest was funded at a, a, a me, a town meeting, so we have the funding.
Alright, perfect, that's great, awesome, any questions?
Yeah, more good news, so I love it.
Yeah, alright, perfect, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve and sign the sales order from National Van Builders for the Council on Aging Van.
Motion made.
Second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, anything else to these two?
I think that's it for you.
Alright.
You get his application for, uh, a Comic Night? Say he was turning it in.
Oh, really?
Yeah, that's what he told us.
That's actually like one of my biggest fears. I need to do like five minutes.
Elevator speeches.
I have, I have totally unfounded anxiety about that. Okay.
That's me.
Alright, so now we'll do the public hearing. So I'm gonna read the public notice, Town Free Town Public Notice, um. Is this what I need to read? Yep, right?
Correct.
Okay, uh, N-Star Electric Company, DBA, Eversource Energy, request permission to locate, uh, poles, wires, cables, and fixtures. Including necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures to be owned and used by your petitioner along. And across, uh, the following public way or ways, South Main Street, Freetown, installing one new, uh, FO stub pole. With anchor to be labeled ninety-nine slash fifty-five dash S, approximately seventy-five feet north of existing pole. Ninety-nine slash fifty-five, wherefore, we pray that do, uh, after due notice and hearing as divided by law. We be granted locations for permissions to erect and maintain poles, wires, and cables with such sustaining and protective features as we may find necessary. Said poles to be erected substantially in, uh, accordance with the plan filed here, uh, here with Mark. Plan number PP zero-two-two-seven-seven-one-one-three, dated November sec, twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four. Also for permission to lay and maintain underground cables, conduits, wires, and necessary equipment in the above or intersecting public ways. For the purpose of making connections with the poles and buildings as each may desire for distributing purposes. Your petitioner agrees to reserve space for one cross arm at a suitable point on each. Uh, of said poles for the fire, police telephone, and telegraph, that's interesting, uh, signal wires belonging to the municipality. And used by exclusively for municipal purposes, a hearing to consider all the above will be held on January twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five. At seven PM at the police station community room, fifteen Memorial Drive, East Freetown, Mass. Persons interested in, um, commenting may appear at this public hearing, if unable to attend, or the public hearing comments may be submitted in writing no later than. Close the business on Wednesday, January fifth, twenty-twenty-five, to Forest Leckman, three-year old, Mr. Masters, signed by the board. So with that, I'll open the public hearing, that was a lot. Hello, are you representing N-Star?
Uh, yes, I am, good evening, members of the board.
Say your name for the record, so.
My name is Jessica Eldo, representing Eversource, thank you for having me this evening.
Thank you.
Eversource is requesting to install, and all that, a, a lot of that, that standard stuff is, is just standard on the petition, it doesn't apply to this particular job.
Yeah.
Um, so we're requesting to install one fully owned pole, which is owned by Eversource, there's no one else on the pole, it's a stub pole. Um, and it also has an anchor, so it's coming from, it will be, uh. Coming from an existing pole that's on the corner of South Main Street and Copacet, um, and that pole that's existing is ninety-nine over fifty-five. And we'll go on approximately seventy-five feet across the street to, uh, install that pole. You know, we understand the concerns of it being near the wetland, um, and we did have our environmental team go out and survey the area. Um, and they found that, uh, well, the Wetland Protection Act, in order to be exempt, has to be within like, I think it's ten feet or more. And this is actually forty feet, uh, this pole will be, uh, right about the edge of the wetland, on the shoulder.
Yep.
On the road, um, and, uh, you know, probably, I, I always say seventy to ten days for installation, but it's usually a couple of days. We're in our winter season, you never know what's gonna, what's gonna happen, um, I'm, I'm not sure on how busy the areas are, I know that's South Main Street. Um, if, if a detail is necessary, we certainly will request one, um, and any disturbance to the area will be put back. To the way it was, if not better.
One question, cause this just is top of mind, we just had a conversation right before you got here about an N-Star pole, uh, this pole. Also on South Main Street, issue we're running into is that it's like right in the middle of a sidewalk, right, where, so, like. Like, mothers pushing, or mu- people pushing, uh, drivers, it's pain, so like, that's an issue where I talk about down the road. This particular pole where it's being moved to, um, I don't think there is a sidewalk, right, cause it's, if it's going up Copacet. Or maybe there is, though.
Be right on the shoulder of the.
Yeah. And what, what I'm thinking about here, so that's, that's.
It's actually gonna be on South Main.
So, yeah, so, you know, they're putting an MBTA station, right, right down the street there, there's gonna be a lot more foot traffic than there currently is. In this region, especially, especially like specifically here, I just wanna make sure that where this pole goes, it doesn't, um. Have to be moved shortly if, if we end up, you know, improving the sidewalks.
Okay.
There, so I just wanna s- kinda wanna look at a Google map real quick.
My, what is the purpose of this pole?
For, for the, the new.
So it's for the solar ray.
The one up on Copacet. Which is. Is that, uh, the gravel pit, I think it's now a.
Yeah, probably, but, I mean, they're putting the pole over here.
So they cross the street, right, so right now it's on. The, our side of South Main, and they're moving it to the corner of Copacet and South Main, like where the, the old building is, yeah. I think right here.
This is the new pole.
I think this is.
No, this is.
I'm misreading it then.
Yeah, and the stub pole is usually for support, and it's, it is gonna be able to support the, the, uh, existing pole that's there.
Yeah, maybe I don't know what a stub pole is.
I, I'm confused, if you look at the plan, um, it doesn't show an existing pole, it shows a proposed stub pole on the right-hand side of South Main Street. Yep, yep.
Yeah, so the pole, the existing pole.
Can you come up, maybe, yeah.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
That'd be helpful?
Yeah, yeah, I'm looking at it now, here.
So I have it up on my computer, too.
Okay.
So, this is your, the existing pole.
That's the opposite of what I thought.
So it's going across here.
So, right, so you're.
This is not according to scale, but, so it's obviously, well, it's gonna be correct.
So you're saying, there's already a pole here.
Mm-hmm.
You need this one for support, but there's no other pole around here, so it's not supporting another pole.
Don't support it, yeah. Because there's, a, a lot of times, especially with the, uh, solar, uh, solar ray, and if there's more equipment on here. Then it becomes too much equipment, too, too heavy to support, and we need to put another pole.
So is it like intercepting between this pole saying another pole down here, and now you're sh- you're making the distance shorter to, so that it's not so. On the pole, it do- it doesn't make sense to me how this pole supports that pole. Is it, is it the wires long, like, where is, where does this run now?
I'm not sure if there's any slack, um, in the wire, and they needed to put another pole to, to, to support it, literally, I. I apologize, I've been out for three or four months and I just come into the end, but.
I don't know where this goes, where does it go now?
This is here, and this is going.
Right, but where does it go now, where does it go now? That's where it's gonna go, but where does it go now?
I, I got a good visual here. So we have, this is the existing pole. It's gonna go somehow over here.
Right.
Right?
Yes.
So I, but it's gonna cross the street, Trevor, it's making any sense.
Like, the supporting, does it mean structural support, does it mean like holding more equipment?
More equipment.
It's not like a structural supporting pole.
Cause it can only, the poles can only hold.
So they're just gonna put a pole there with, and, and they're gonna hang a bunch of equipment on it, and they're gonna run wires back and forth to it? So it's gonna, you, you know what I'm saying?
It is weird, because you'd think it'd be, like, if the rest of the, of the stuff is on this side of the street, like, and there's nothing on this side of the street.
There's a lot, there's a lot of, uh, equipment.
So it's just gonna run, like a wire's gonna run over or underneath, I don't know.
In an anchor, in an, there's gonna be a pole and an anchor, which is gonna support that pole.
I mean, I'm not an engineer, but, I, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me, I don't know, but I don't know what I'm talking about.
Well, if there's too much equipment on there, and that pole can't, can't withstand, uh, the equipment, then you need another pole to support it.
Yeah, but why would you cross the street with that pole, why wouldn't you put that pole in, in the same, in the same line with these other poles?
Not in any, I'm not sure, um, I'm honestly, I don't.
Cause you, you see what I'm saying, like, like, if you look on this side of the street.
Down there, or, you know.
Well, I guess there's something, there's some, maybe it's like this, so see here, there's, something crossing.
That's a house, yeah, that's, uh, that's Bobby Weaver's house.
Bobby Weaver's house, yeah, I say that, isn't that Bobby Weaver's property?
Yeah, well, yeah, it is, and you're right on the property line, so Bobby Weaver's right here, Johanna Wilson. And this is, this is, this is before, before their house a little bit, cause it's on the property line, they put in the pole.
And it's like, obviously.
Over the guardrail, and, yeah, in the wetlands.
But there is, yeah, it's like this, there is the pole here, right, this, this pole.
They probably already did the work. No, while they do things.
It's not us, well.
Well, yes, sometimes you guys put the poles in before you ask for the permits.
Uh, there's times in my department isn't aware that, and it really does reflect, and, yeah. Believe me, we, we lay into them, because it's just, you know, it's a.
Yeah, no, we've had, we've had that, yeah, I got it, but I think it's gonna be exactly like this, so, like, on this side of the street, they have this. Pole, which is like anchoring this.
I see it.
Okay. Uh, this might be the first time I've brought up Google Maps as a part of a.
That's cool, though, I think it's helpful, it's helpful for us to all at least understand.
Yeah, no, exactly, I think it is.
Sometimes the plans are a little, you know, um, a little difficult, so I want to.
Yeah, no, it's, yeah, and it's, it's just like, things look so much different on plans than they do when you look at it, like, you know, then things start to make more sense. Alright, any, any other questions or concerns before I close the public hearing, and then we can vote on this? Right, okay, so.
Any concerns with like weather, like, do they have to dig to do this and stuff, or?
I mean, I've asked that before, and like, I think they have the equipment to do stuff here, right?
It's not a lot to put a pole in the ground, I believe it or not, they just, they ram it in, like, it's not like they dig, and they, it's not like they dig, they, they just kinda.
I just, I just watched the news at my house, uh, tree snapped the pole, and they came out, they had the auger out, dug it down, by the time the auger was done, they were already lifting the pole in the air. When the auger was being moved, the pole was being dropped in, it was, they were done within, uh, within, within the hour.
Yeah, they're not digging up the road or anything like that.
Pole, yeah, it was pretty quick, so, I geeked out, watched it all.
And then my original concern is null and void, because it's on the side of the street, doesn't have a.
Right, oh, right, right, right.
So that, that's a good.
Yeah, it doesn't, it's not, it's not on the sidewalk, there's no sidewalk over there.
Which is good, okay, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Sec, oh, motion made.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and then I'll just jump to agenda item twenty-one, um, this is, yeah, absolutely.
Thanks for being here.
I'll entertain a motion to, um, approve the request for the, um. Moving the pole on South Main Street.
Motion made.
Second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, does that suffice? Okay, alright, so now, we will jump back to, let me find my.
Number ten?
Seven, fifteen, ten, yep. Okay, so, this is, um, agenda ten, discussion of vote whether to open, approve, close warrant for submissions. Make recommendations and close the, uh, two twenty-four, twenty twenty-five special town meeting warrant, and send it to town council for review. I did look at what we had so far. Everything looked pretty reasonable. Nope, yeah. Alright, what page am I going to, to start this?
And then you can.
I'll figure out.
Look at mine if you want to.
Agenda ten, ninety's and ninety-four, which is so helpful having that, by the way. I, when I'm at home, I have like one screen has the agenda, one screen has the packet, and it's like, makes it so much easier. My, no, please don't, no.
It is above, no.
Maybe I. I, I've like literally read this, here it is, here it is. Okay, anything specifically you wanna talk about on here?
Well, there's, I mean, this is, you know, a, 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 a light lift in comparison to a lot of stuff we've done. Um, a lot just housekeeping, for the most part, I can quickly run through them, um. The first one listed, the, now we, we sometimes renumber them and move them as we're, uh, finalizing things. Request for a prior year invoice, you know, if we don't get the invoices in by June thirtieth, we can't pay them in the ne- in the, in the next fiscal year. So something that, like that pops up, we have to put an article on town meeting to pay a prior year.
Question about that, is there a way for us to get around that, like, is there a way for us to have a bylaw change, or something of that nature, or is it state, like, is it?
I don't know, I don't know if there's a way we could fund, put a, like.
Like a ten, like a five thousand dollar?
Yeah, like, yeah, five thousand dollar, um, something that could be approved by FinCom, if in fact, um, a prior year.
Just, just to be a little more efficient, cause I feel like, there's always these on.
There's always one, yeah, I, I can check into it, but for this one, we need to.
Okay, but regardless.
This was a June thirtieth bill that just got missed, so it's not like it, people weren't doing their job or anything like that, it just got missed.
Understood.
The police station needs an upgrade to their phone system, it will no longer be supported, the current phone system, so they need to upgrade the system.
This is gonna upset people, just because we just built this building.
It's, I think it's three years, right, isn't it like four years, and the phone system's no longer being supported?
Wh- one, one other question on this one I thought about is. Yeah, which I, I understand, like, it is what it is, right, but I'm just saying, like, we should prepare for people to be like, how is that possible, which, you know.
It's more software driven than it is actual physically, I think the physical phones are okay, it's the software that drives the whole system, and it's a complicated system with the police station.
The only other thought I have is, once we, if we get the fiber money.
Yep.
Will there be a change that we need to do to the communication systems?
I think we've already wired this building for fiber, um, I, so I do not think so, I think we're all set here.
Okay, cause you see what I'm saying there, right, like, cause then, like, in three years, you get, once the fiber project's done, we have to go back and say, hey, by the way, we need to, uh. But, okay, and fifteen thousand, it's not like it's.
I think you can explain it better, too, I, um, you know, um. I think it's more complicated than just the, you know, like, our town hall phone system.
Yeah, I'm sure, I mean, think about it, right, like, it's very important, like, uh, nine-one-one can't go down.
Yeah. So, um, it's fifteen thousand dollars, it's just a funding article, um. Tax title, payment plan, bylaw change, so we, we enacted a bylaw that says if you're behind in your taxes, you can make a payment plan. But you have to put twenty-five percent down, and I, I, you have up to ten years to pay it back, or, or five years, I forget the years. Um, the, and we based that off of Master General Law, the Master General Law changed, it said you can, you can reduce the deposit down to ten percent. Which, uh, we, 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 there's a few of us, me, myself and Patty and, and Carlton, we discussed, we think it's, um. Something that makes sense, only because generally people don't have twenty-five percent to pay down.
Or they would've paid it anyways.
Yeah, and they can't go into payment plan, and we really don't wanna take people's houses, we're not in the business of taking people's houses, we want them to be able to pay their. Tap back taxes, so this is just the change from twenty-five to ten percent.
And was there a change in Master Law that allows us to do that?
Yes.
Okay, that makes a lot of sense.
It just sort of crossed in our last town meeting, so, um, so.
And that's a great change.
Yeah, I think it'll be helpful, um, the. All the, the Council on Aging Board, they want to add alternates to the Council on Aging Board, and it's a bylaw, so that just needs to be amended to allow that to happen.
Easy peasy.
The municipal fiber project, which I've talked about, I need funding, I have grant funding in the amount of, uh, three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, and I'm. Looking to match it at three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Can they steal our grant money for the?
I don't think so, cause I think we, we already have it sitting in our bank account, and I'm gonna get this thing going before July anyways, it's, I, I, you signed a contract to have, um. Somebody do the engineering and stuff, so that's already underway.
Right.
Um, just keep in mind that at this town meeting, we can't raise inappropriate any funds, we have to go from, we, we can only use, uh, cash funds. So everything is from, where we're spending is from.
Because of the type of meetings, yeah.
Yep, all the money is from, um, free cash, so it's, it's, so when you, so just, so keep that in mind, this isn't gonna be any tax increases or anything like that. Um, the, an increased tax credit for senior work off program, I'm not sure who's suggested this one, but. You know, we have seniors that come and do work for the town in return for a credit on their, let's say, tax bill. They currently can, uh, work up to, up and get fifteen hundred dollars, that, this is be proposing to increase it to two thousand. I have to just vet these a little bit and make sure they've gone through the proper channels, but that's.
Yeah.
A suggestion.
I'm sure there's gotta be Master Law about that, too.
Yeah, yeah, um, and then there's a similar for the Veterans Work Off Program, we do have veterans that, um, come and, uh. Go to work for the town, and, um, in return for. in return for, instead of a paycheck, they get some money off their real estate taxes, and so this is to increase that as well. Um, the disposal of personal property in our bylaw, it, and I was just looking at this today. It says that anything that is valued at greater than five thousand dollars technically needs to go to town meeting, so.
That's crazy.
Yeah, I'm like, five thousand, and we, we just roughly penciled in ten, and I'm like, I think it should be like twenty five. Yeah, like, what are we gonna go to town meeting for? And then, it, you still have to auction it off, it's, it, it's, you know, I would say anything over ten thousand.
As long as it's auctioned off, and it's, and it's through a fair, like, it's a.
Public auction.
Public auction, you know, I mean, if, it, I can understand there's, if it was through like a private kind of thing, that there's opportunity there for, for some, from sketchy activity.
Yeah, or if you were gonna sell, sell a building, yes, you need to go to town meeting for approval, but, but, I'm like, I think we sold the car for fifty two hundred, so like, okay, I mean, we didn't expect that, but, so. We technically needed to go to town meeting to get that approval.
Yeah, that's crazy. And this is just, I'm sure it's a very dated bylaw, but, the inflation adjusted number is probably much over ten thousand dollars, so.
So I'm just trying to clean that up, um, you know, there's a citizen petition that we've heard of, that we don't have yet. I'm expecting it to, to get here before the, before this is finalized, and I think that's it. This one.
The Morton Building.
The Morton Building, um, I have spoken to Chuck, uh, while we're, we're planning on bringing this one, he wants to wait until the spring.
Yeah, I thought I saw the, oh, the citizens, it's, it's in here, but it's not.
It's in here, but it's not, it's not validated yet.
Okay, and this is, should we talk about what it is?
You can, oh, yeah, you can, I mean, we don't have a choice whether, like, we don't, we don't.
But it's, it's, it's the, it's to allow concealed carry at municipal buildings. Um, because it's based on some new gun regulations, municipal buildings were then, uh, prohibited buildings. This is a bylaw that cha- or this is a change that will allow us to, uh, kind of carve out certain buildings to not be protected buildings or prohibited, prohibited areas determined. So that, this is a petition that folks are putting together to make that change. All right?
Any concerns, any issues?
No, is there not, we're missing anything?
Not that I'm aware of at this moment, but you know, things come up every day in that free town, free town.
It's like night's still early.
All right, perfect.
Said, I think it's gonna be a, a quick meeting, I'm not expecting any, any big, anything, um.
So what vote do you need now? Close it, approve?
I think we just want you to vote to close it and, uh, send it to town council for review.
Okay, tell a chain motion to close the, uh, two twenty four, twenty twenty five special town meeting warrant, and submit it to council for review.
Motion made.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I, I, I know I gave you my dates, I am gonna be here for that, right?
Yes.
For something, I was assuming it was the twenty seventh, and I was like, I'm pretty sure I'm due there. Great, so that takes care of ten, we already did eleven. We now need to do twelve. This is discussion of vote whether to approve the agreement between the town of Free Town and River Hawk Environmental, and this is for the, I'm gonna butcher this. Uh, wetland assessment, um, for a piece of property over on Bloke Road. Um, any questions or concerns?
No.
Fifty eight hundred dollars.
It's a good deal, it's a good price.
Okay, all right, so with that, I want to entertain a motion to approve the agreement between the town of Free Town and River Hawk Environmental.
Motion made.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we already did agenda, I'm thirteen. Um, agenda fourteen acknowledged setting up freetown.gov email addresses for planning and zoning boards of appeals members, and I like how these are all, uh, just set up so that they are just like board seat one, board seat two.
Yep.
Right, therefore, as we know, boards are constantly changing, emails can be switched over to other people, and we can have continuity, so that makes sense to me.
I was thinking continuity, the same thing, this way if they come and go, we still have the emails and all the records.
Perfect, and make sure they know that.
Yeah.
That's an important, I, I'm sure we have, we must have a policy.
There's a memo that goes out, that tells them the do's and don'ts, and you have to save everything, you can't delete and everything.
Can't save everything, don't delete anything, no personal stuff. Don't write anything in an email with that email that you wouldn't want to be in the newspaper.
That is correct.
That is a important thing to live by. All right, so with that, oh, well, I don't have to do anything, there's no vote, just acknowledging it. All right, awesome. Agenda sixteen, so we already did fifteen, so I'll move on to sixteen. Uh, discussion of vote to approve the following policies, uh, so, policy sixteen A, or, sorry. Agenda item A, sixteen A, is six point one motor fuel, uh, vehicle tax commitments and billings, which immediately gave me a panic today that I was like, did I pay my? My motor bill, that's why, I still didn't check, so I have to make sure I did that. And then B is the motor vehicle tax, um, payment processing. Um, not the most exciting documents, they all seem to be pretty standard, and nothing jumped out to me as being, uh. So, I, I was totally fine with them.
Getting to the end of the policies, we're getting there.
Yeah, boring is good. All right, so with that, I want to entertain a motion to approve, uh, policy six point one and six point two.
Motion made.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, agenda item seventeen, discussion of votes, set the pay rate for the winter twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five, sander only. I don't know, I don't think I saw this yet.
I did ask, um, Chuck McComber, who suggested a hundred and thirty dollars an hour.
So this is just, like, plowing, but just for sanding?
Yeah, they don't have a plow, they would just be sanding.
A hundred and thirty dollars an hour, and they.
Mister Pope is here, right?
Yeah.
Joe, rather.
Did he, did he say what he's gonna use that vehicle for?
I'm not sure where you're.
Where's he gonna use the sander?
For the snowstorms.
He has his own sander.
Yeah.
I think he said something about the police station. Did he talk about locations?
He didn't, he just said, put in the paperwork, you guys will vote on it, and we'll go from there.
Okay.
Okay. Is the name of your company Grass Gone Wild?
Yes, that is me.
I love that.
Thank you. They do good work around town.
I do a lot of volunteer work as well, with all our facilities, as far as baseball, football, and everything else, so, glad to see that, you made it to the table here, um. I love helping you guys out and staying in town, so. My good buddy Brandon Sulo owns, uh, Lawn, Lawn and Order.
He's a good guy.
Yeah. Uh, all right, so, the first, first thing, so this, so Chuck recommended one thirty, one thirty an hour?
One thirty an hour.
That seems reasonable to me. Any questions or concerns with that?
It's, it's in line with, uh, all the municipalities out there, so.
Okay, so with that, I want to entertain a motion, uh, to set the period for the winter twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, sander only, rate at one hundred and thirty dollars an hour.
Motion made.
Second that, all favor, all favor, aye. All right, and then now for Benjamin Jope, am I saying that right?
A joke, yeah.
So with that, um, all paperwork's in, everything's good?
Yep.
Um, so you own a sander, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a, sure, that's not a cheap piece of equipment to, yeah.
Hopefully it doesn't break.
Yeah.
We'll be good.
All right, great, so, with that, I want to entertain a motion to approve the snow application for Benjamin Jope for, uh, Grass Gone Wild for the winter twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, sander only.
Motion made.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
Very welcome.
I, I wish, you should've spoken up, I could've got you way earlier in the agenda, but, maybe you learned something today.
I'm good, I'm good here, here watching, so.
All right, awesome. All right, so now I'll kick it over to personnel.
All right, thank you, thank you. All right, item agenda number nineteen on the personnel board. Discussion and vote whether to approve the updated data acquisition and infrastructure maintenance job description. Like many of you out there may think this was an IT position, you'd be wrong, this is for waterline infrastructures. So, this is just our continued effort to update all the job descriptions here in town, so that when we do put it out there, we know exactly what we're hiring, and the folks applying know exactly what they're applying for. So, this is just, uh, another one, uh, that has been checked off. Uh, any questions, concerns?
Nope, there's a word I don't know in this, essentially.
Oh, the, the A word?
Yeah.
The, uh.
It's like apparatuses, but it's not.
I thought it was apparatuses as well, and I stayed away from it.
A P P U R T E N A N C E S.
Pardonances.
Pardonances, I've never seen that word before. I mean, I'm obviously, I, there's a lot of words I haven't seen, so I wouldn't, I'm not saying it's wrong, I just say I haven't seen it before.
Other than that one word, I think everything else looks pretty straightforward, and, um, this is a vital, vital job here in, uh, in free town, in any town, really. To make sure that our water lines are up to, up to specs, um, from meters to systems to all the butters, you name it, this person does a lot of great work.
I was thinking about like, lifting a hundred pounds, that's pretty.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a part of the description.
Usually you have people, most job descriptions are thirty, forty pound, maybe fifty pounds, a hundred pounds, it's.
It is a lot, I just carried, I think, forty pounds of rock salt, my thought.
So those, uh, cast iron pipes that we have on the ground, that crack and break, they have to lift them up.
A lot of heavy stuff, all right, yeah, I'm good with it.
All right, I entertain a motion to approve the updated data acquisition infrastructure maintenance job description.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor? I second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, item agenda twenty, discussion and vote whether to approve the following appointments. A, Brendan Simmons as senior clerk, part-time planning ZBA, effective one twenty seven, twenty twenty five, through six thirty, twenty twenty five. B, Nina Dumont as recording clerk for economic development committee, building committee, finance committee, council of aging library, building, community building committee. Bylaw review committee in commission on disability, ZBA, conservation, comm, and planning board, effective one twenty two, twenty twenty five through six thirty, twenty twenty five. Whew, how's it mouth?
Yeah.
C, Robert Farias, patrolman, full-time, effective one twenty seven, twenty twenty four, through six thirty, twenty twenty five. And lastly but not least, D, Mark Aldette, as seasonal plow, snow plow driver, effective one twenty two, twenty twenty five, through four thirty, twenty twenty five. Um, for C, this is the, the person that's in the academy now, correct? That's graduating from the academy?
I think so, yes.
Yeah, that's what I thought. I was, I wasn't sure, I just wanted to be confirmed.
Might have a full house.
Not questioned, but like, just like, like, so, I know we have a shortage of clerks, and, like, so, does this, these two appointments, are we, are we in a better position? Substantially?
We are in a better position, yeah, we're short a planner still, uh, but we have a part-time clerk now in conservation and assessing combined, we have a part-time clerk which will be planning in ZBA. We have a full-time clerk in border health and a full-time clerk in building, so, I think we're getting there. And then the minutes clerk will just be available to do minutes for anybody that needs a minutes clerk, to do minutes for them. Volunteer, but not volunteer.
Speaking of that, totally side note, but I saw a cool app, it's a physical device powered by chat GPT. And it just listens to you, and then it gives you minutes, makes you a transcript. Really cheap, just something to think about.
Something to think about, yeah.
Yeah, can I just, before we finalize this vote, this came through from the department head with that date on it?
Yeah, that's wrong.
Yeah, so, this is what was on, um, Carlos, it says for Robert Farias, twenty twenty four, but it should be twenty twenty five.
Yes, you're correct.
January twenty, well, I got, the form that came over said twenty twenty four, but.
They keep doing that.
I was just like, wait a minute.
Uh, one twenty seven, twenty twenty five?
Yeah, so if we can just fix that.
Yeah, so I, I think we acknowledge that now, so, agenda, yeah.
I'm agenda C, yeah, instead of one twenty seven, twenty twenty four, it'd be redacted, and in place will be one twenty seven, twenty twenty five, through six thirty, twenty twenty five.
Perfect.
Uh, no, no other concerns, comments, or issues, will I entertain the motion to approve the appointments listed as A through D and agenda twenty in tonight's agenda?
I'll make that motion.
All in favor? I second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's tricky when we're, you know, switch it up. All right, I think that's everything for personnel. Uh, we did the public hearing, I think we covered the entire agenda.
Yeah, I think the only thing I wanted to tell you, and I've kinda told you, is the, the grant, the nine one one safety grant to the fire department was originally, we did not get it because we weren't in compliance for, we roughly get fifteen thousand, sixteen thousand dollars a year. But the chief's able to buy Miss Lacey's equipment that he needs to run the department with it, and we originally did not get it. Once they get the, the court case came down, and there was a little window of reprieve there, we were notified that we did get it. And so we will get it in the, shortly, but, um, it's just a, a taste of what's gonna happen if we're not in compliance with MBTA. Which, from all accounts that I can see right now, we're, we'll be in compliance till July of twenty five.
If we spend it, though, they can't take it back?
I don't, I don't believe they'll take it back, I don't believe that, although I will tell you, with the library grant, they have specifically said they will.
Yeah.
They will take it back, we do know that. These other ones, I don't think that they will, um, I have no way of knowing.
I think they, like, there's gotta be language in the grant applications that specify whether or not.
So I signed the DEP grant, knowing that, um, the DEP grant that, I, a few weeks ago I told you that, was like seventy two hundred for recycling, that we, it said, when I signed it, subject to being in compli- full compliance with, um, the zoning at that time, so, I signed it because I didn't know if we were, at that time I signed it, we were in compliance, cause it was prior to December.
Before the Supreme Court.
Right, it was, it was prior to December thirty first, where we technically went on a compliance, and I was hopeful that something like this might happen, so I says, I'm gonna put the paperwork in anyway. In case, so, uh, but it did say in there, so I think had we not gotten this short window of reprieve, they just wouldn't have sent us the money.
Gotcha. All right.
But, none of us know, right? We're gonna keep them.
All right. We're gonna bring them on down. All right, we're gonna sign, and then we'll adjourn.
Do you want me to sign these, or you want us to sign that one?
I think it's, Carlos, where he's here, I'm sure.
Oh, sorry, just you, I literally heard you say that, and I just like, one in, one out.
Do you mean how many policies we have left? Off the top of your head?
I think there may be one that needs a little workout surplus thing.
The rifles?
No, the policies.
Did you ever find your other sheet of?
Yes, I need that one, I just got all those from the insurance company. I have to do. There's, there's about five more policies that I'm, I have to get done. That just came from the insurance company saying, we need these policies.
So that, yeah, that's good that they drive that, though, that makes sense, right? That they want you to have that kinda compliance.
Yeah, you're trying, and they want us to protect ourselves, so.
Yeah, no, I, I think that's a good. Cause I'm sure a lot of towns, you know, might not protect themselves unless they are being forced to.
Yeah, we don't wanna be reactionary, right, but unfortunately, that's, that's what happens.
There's so many things going on, you, you can't do everything all.
I know, but we're getting there with the policies, and at least, like I said, you can always change them. But at least you need them in place to start, and then we're gonna work, start with the employee handbook and.
Yeah.
And work, work that, which is.
And a digital one, would be, that'd be good, fantastic.
Which is, you know, again, you're looking at all the different unions and different whatnot, so it's a little, it's work, it's not like you can just draft up.
This is again, just you, so we need, this is the van, so, sign and initial.
Ninety thousand for that van actually is less than I thought it would be.
I think it's more than what we originally were paying. But it's a big van, that's a big van.
Those are.
Oh, you already signed those?
Yeah, those are, like, like, just Sprinter vans in general, super expensive, like.
Well, I mean, a sedan is like forty.
I know, I was looking at cars, but cause I checked, actually, I came on, so I'm looking at cars, it's like.
What year is yours?
Two thousand fifteen.
Mine too.
Yeah. See what Audi says.
Mine has got like thirty thousand miles on it, though.
Yeah, mine is a hundred and sixty.
We're afraid for you, Audi BMWs and Mercedes, we'll get you.
Believe me. Uh, all right, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion made.
I'll second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.